Call this town meeting to order. And look at all the people sitting here. Isn't this amazing? It's nice to see all of you. Now, see if we can do the town's business a little more efficiently. Now, if you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I hope everybody saw the card up at the back to sign for Joan Hastings. Pretty amazing. She was a town meeting member on the very first time. We had representative town meeting 50 years ago, and she's been a town meeting continuously since then. Unfortunately, Joan can't be with us tonight, but please sign the big poster board up there, a card for her. And we recently lost someone who was a... who served this town over many, many years. Our former DPW head, Shemal Chuduri, passed away recently. So could I have a moment of silence for him, please? Thank you. Okay, housekeeping motion. The moderator would entertain a motion to name Bruce Maury deputy moderator, that we adjourn until 7:00 on Monday, October 3rd, should we not finish our business tonight, and we may vote by raising hands. Do I hear it? All in favor? Even though I should make you stand, all opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I guess we can start the meeting then. General articles. Article 1 is a report of town officers and committees. I had asked Mr. Sanchez to give us a quick report on our water situation, but he was unable to make it tonight. So there is a... He had a write-up, which is up on the back table, that you can... folks can pick up, so you can get updated completely on that. And now, we're going to have a presentation on our... Excuse me. The Housing Partnership. Carrie Donahue, please. Take it away.
Try again. It should be on. Don't... Yes.
There we go. Okay. Hi. So I'm Carrie Donahue. I'm chair of the Burlington Housing Partnership Committee. I'm joined here tonight by a couple of our committee members. Our select board member, Mike Runyon, and Eileen Zickler, Toya Nataola. And we are here this evening to present the Housing Needs Assessment. So first, I want to clarify, some people know and some people don't know that there are two entities in town that are responsible for affordable housing. There is the Housing Authority, which manages the two properties for people with disabilities and seniors in town. And then, there's our committee, which advises the select board on other affordable housing initiatives in town. So this time last year, we came to town meeting, and we asked you to allocate funds for a comprehensive housing needs assessment, which had never been done before in our town. And so, I'm basically here tonight to share the findings of that assessment. So first, a really quick overview of what we did. We worked with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, which is a regional planning agency that works with Burlington and other communities on those types of research. And they did a number of things. So they started by collecting data on our housing, our housing stock, the types of housing we have, the breakdown, what kind of things we have. They also looked at our demographics, so resident incomes, jobs, race, age, that kind of thing, and affordability. So who's spending what on housing in Burlington? Then, to get a real-world sense of perspective on the data, we hosted a series of focus groups with residents. We fielded a digital survey, and then we hosted a town-wide forum. So through all of these, we heard firsthand from residents about their experience with housing in Burlington. The result is a 60-page report. It's pretty long. It was available on the town's website. And we also have a very short video that I'll show you a little bit later. And then, we have some other collateral that we're going to use to share the findings of the report with the community. So what were the findings? The data that we collected came from a number of sources, Census Bureau, Zillow, CoStar, places like that. And I'm going to give you really the highest-level overview. So first, looking at the housing stock in Burlington, and this is no surprise to anyone. The majority of our housing is detached, single-family homes. Only 19% of our housing is what's known as middle housing. And that's the homes like townhomes and duplexes and condos, accessory dwelling units. And then, 16... That's only 19% of our stock. And then, 16% of our stock is large multifamily with 21 more units. The next one, home prices in Burlington have climbed astronomically over the last 10 years. Since 2011, the average home price in Burlington has gone up 95%. So from nearly $358,000 in 2011 to nearly $700,000 in 2021. In that time, median incomes have only gone up 28%. So it has become much, much harder for the average family in Burlington to buy a home. If you owned a home before that time or early in that period, you had a much easier time buying a home than anyone trying to buy one now. Rents have skyrocketed as well. They've gone up 46% since 2011. Today, a renter in Burlington would need an income of over $96,000 a year to afford the average apartment in Burlington. And as I said, incomes have not kept up with this pace. We also took a look at our town's demographics, as I mentioned, and we discovered that we have a pretty staggering gap in homeownership by race. 84% of homeowners in Burlington are white. Only 1% of homeowners are black, 1% are Asian, and... Sorry, 1% are Hispanic, 1% are black, and 14% are Asian. And then, finally, we took a look at what's known as cost burdens. So cost burdens are when a household spends more than 30% of their income on housing, they're considered cost burdened. And of course, that means that they basically spend less on food, transportation, healthcare, things like that. And so, what we found is that in Burlington, 28% of households, nearly a third of all households in Burlington, are cost burdened. And it's an issue that affects both homeowners and renters, but it's more severe for renters. So if you look at the numbers, the nearly 45% of renters in town, nearly half, are cost burdened. But we also want to think about the 22% of residents, the owners, who are cost burdened as well, because as home values go up, it can be difficult for people to continue to afford their homes, especially seniors who are transitioning to a fixed income, for instance. So those are the key takeaways from the data. But like I said, we also compiled data from the community feedback that we received. I'm going to give you kind of the top 10. That MAPC basically aggregated this using some call tricks. So first, there is a strong desire for that middle housing that I mentioned, which can be more affordable to seniors, to young families, to young homebuyers. There was a strong feeling that homeownership is both unattainable and unaffordable in Burlington right now, and that there's no way for young families to get a toehold in the market. Third, our community values diversity and inclusion, and many hope that our town will become more equitable in the coming years, and that we can try to see that racial homeownership gap go down. So those are the sort of big three takeaways. Fourth, there's a strong sense that seniors are not able to age in place, so that they also cannot find downsizing options that allow them to stay in the community. And that really goes back to the lack of diversity in our housing, the fact that we have so many single-family homes that when a senior ages out of their home, there's nowhere for them to go to stay in our community. I took a look at the real estate listings in Burlington just today. There are 18 homes on the market. There are zero condos, zero townhomes, nothing for anybody to buy that isn't a single-family home. And the median home price is around, it was like 1.15 million. And for comparison's sake, Lexington has six... There's like a half a dozen condos and townhomes right now, and we have none. Number five. Cost burdens, as I mentioned, cause people to make really difficult trade-offs in what they pay for in terms of food and healthcare and things like that. More capital A affordable housing is needed, and that's the kind of housing that is deed-restricted. That's the kind of housing that is not allowed to cost more than 30% of someone's income. We have very long waiting lists for affordable housing in Burlington, four or five years sometimes, if not more, because we don't have enough of them. And there's also a bit of a misunderstanding in Burlington that while... This is really complicated to explain, but the gist of it is, we are technically meeting the state's 10% threshold for affordable housing, but what's misleading about that is that that count includes market rate units. So if a property has 200 units, 10 of them are earmarked as affordable, all 200 count into the affordable housing count. So when you take those market rate units out, we are actually at about 5.4% affordable housing. Next. Going back again to the lack of diversity. Single person and small households do not have many options in town. In the focus groups, we heard from a lot of divorced parents who said that, you know, they wanted to stay close to their kids, but there was nothing for them to buy in Burlington to be able to do that. Eight. Many observe that teardowns are occurring more and more frequently, resulting in a loss of starter homes and an increase in those very large, very expensive homes. There is a lack of family-sized rental housing for those who can't afford to purchase a home. And anecdotally, we heard from a lot of people who said they've seen overcrowding in our rental units. We heard from a school bus driver in town who lives in a two-bedroom apartment with her three children. She... They have the bedrooms. She sleeps on the couch. She pays $1,800 a month for her rent, and she's been on the waiting list for something like six years for affordable housing. So this is the kind of invisible story that we were able to tease out a little bit, and it was pretty unsettling. And then, the last one is that we need more housing options for the local workforce. So we have a really great economy in terms of jobs. We have 45,000 jobs in Burlington. Only about 2,000 people actually live and work in Burlington. With so much retail, restaurants, a large hospital, our town's economy relies heavily on the service industry, and increasingly, the people working in those jobs and supporting our economy cannot afford to live here. So, we're going to switch it over, right? Starting tomorrow, we're going to roll this report out to the community. One of the ways we've done that, acknowledging that most people are not going to read a 60-page report, is that we've put together a short video, and I'm going to share with you, and which will be on our Housing Partnerships Facebook page tomorrow. It's already on the town website. I encourage you as town meeting members to share this with your friends and family, to, you know, help us get the word out about these challenges that we're trying to address.
In Burlington, like many places in Massachusetts and around the country, it can be hard to find an affordable place to live. Rents and home prices are through the roof. To learn more about our town's housing challenges, the Burlington Housing Partnership Committee worked with MAPC to examine data about our housing and demographics, and also listened to the concerns of residents. The final result is a comprehensive housing needs assessment, and there are five key findings in the report. First, Burlington needs a greater variety of housing types. Nearly 2/3 of our town's housing stock is detached, single-family homes, which tend to be both large and expensive. Smaller homes like townhouses, duplexes, and small multifamily buildings designed to blend into the town's existing character would make homeownership possible for young professionals, small households, and seniors looking to downsize. Since single-family homes make up most of Burlington's current housing stock, it's very difficult to buy a home in town. Today, someone would need nearly $140,000 in savings just for the down payment. And with rents through the roof as well, saving this much money is virtually impossible for many young families. By creating more housing options and expanding homeownership in Burlington, we can also become a more inclusive and equitable community, which is something that many of the residents in our focus groups and online survey told us is very important to them. And while creating different types of housing will expand what's known as lowercase a affordable housing, that is, housing that is affordable to median-income residents, Burlington also needs more of what's known as capital A affordable housing, that is, deed-restricted housing that is affordable to our lowest-income residents, including seniors. For every five eligible households, the town currently has only one affordable housing unit. Without more housing options and capital A affordable housing, the Burlington community could change dramatically in the coming years. We could lose our seniors, our teachers, essential workers, and all the people who make our town vibrant and diverse.
Putting myself through school so I can hopefully afford it someday. Even looking at what I would make as a nurse, I would still have to work very hard to try and stay in this community, which I just find a little unfair, because, you know, I've grown up here. My daughter's growing up here, and I shouldn't be pushed away.
Our town is not unique in facing these housing challenges, but if we take action, we can work to make Burlington's housing more inclusive and meet the needs of both current and future residents. Visit the Burlington Housing Needs Assessment website to read the full report and learn what our town can do to address these challenges.
So, next steps. There's a lot of different things that we can do, and our committee is looking at them and trying to figure out what we're going to recommend to the select board. We are an advisory committee to the select board, but we're looking at the findings of this report, thinking about a lot of different options. This is something that takes a multi-pronged approach. At the moment, we are strongly leaning towards recommending the establishment of a municipal affordable housing trust, which would give the town a mechanism to administer different types of programs related to affordable housing, especially if CPA is passed in November, which our committee has endorsed, and which could bring us more funding to work on these problems. We could, however, choose to do a housing production plan. We will certainly need to keep the new MBTA community zoning regulations in mind as that starts to evolve. And we'll also need to keep in mind, obviously, the town's guidelines and the new master plan. Is Liz here? Ms. Pumpentry? There she is. So I have to give a shout-out to Liz, who attended many, many meetings with me over the year, and I believe is our interim planning director at the moment. And so, she's going to be working very hard on a lot of these things and has been invaluable to us, and wading through this data and trying to wrap our brains around it. So thank you for letting me share the findings. As I said, it's a 60-page report, and I'm not... I'm condensing it a great deal. But I do encourage you to download it on the website if you want to read through it and learn more. And obviously, feel free to reach out to any of our committee members if you have questions.
Thank you, Carrie. Now, this is a report on the work that we had voted to fund. It's not a time for a debate of this. There will be opportunities later, but we will take a couple of questions if anyone has anything.
It's a lot to process.
It is a lot to process. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
One... Mr. Spale.
Hello, hello? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Carrie, for the report and all the work that your committee has done. Just a quick question. Can you define what middle housing is?
Sure. Yep. So middle housing is, it's often referred to as the missing middle in communities like ours, because it is that sort of between housing. It is not the large multifamily buildings and is not single-family homes. It's basically everything in between. It is townhomes, duplexes, condos, accessory dwelling units. Often, you and I have talked about this a little bit, that one of the things that I like to talk about when I explain housing to people is the life cycle of housing. So like, raise your hand if you were born a homeowner, right? Like, nobody's born a homeowner. We grow up and we live in our parents' house, and then we... You know, everybody takes a different path it off, and you move out. You move into an apartment. You live there for a while. Maybe you buy a condo, and then you get married, or you... You know, there's steps that people go through. And what we found in this study is that our town is missing that piece in the middle that make it possible for, you know... When my son grows up, and I would like him to live in Burlington and raise his family if he wants to, there needs to be somewhere in the middle for him to live, right? He needs to be able to establish a toehold in the market at an affordable, lower rate than the cost of an expensive, single-family home. So that's that missing middle.
Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
And thank you to your committee for all their hard work.
Thank you very much. Close this down.
Okay, let's move on to Article 2. Annual Town Election Date. To see if the town will vote to set the annual town election for April 1st, 2023. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, we'll pull to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 3 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and the article is as printed in the warrant. It is to accept money from the will of Marshall Simons. Ways and Means, please. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means vote to support this 14-0-0. This is the second vote of two as required by the will to accept the money. I believe the Rec Department described the Accessible Treehouse Project that they were planning to use this money for at our last meeting.
Thank you. Any questions on this, or question for the Rec Department on how they're going to spend the money? Seeing none, we'll pull to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 4 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from stabilization... the stabilization fund to sum of $150,000 for the purpose of funding consulting services, which may include owner's property manager, design, architectural engineering, and any other services required for completing a feasibility study for a newly constructed police station to be sent under the direction of the town administrator. Town Administrator. Mr. Sagorino, do you wish to speak on this? Oh, John. And vote of the Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Dinesio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Dinesio, Assistant Town Administrator. There was a detailed memo in your backup from Chief Brown just describing some of the deficiencies at the police station. We've talked a lot about it in meetings over the past few months leading up to here, and Chief Brown is here to also answer any questions. But I thought I would just give a brief overview of what a feasibility study is, you know, what this $150,000 is going to be used for. And so, really, what a feasibility study has four parts for us. That is, we'll start with a needs assessment and space program of the current police department. We'll see what department, you know, what branches of the department we have, Detective Bureau, that sort of thing, what type of space we need, how many offices we have, what the right size for a police station for modern-day policing is. There will be some site assessment. We'll be assessing at least two sites. The current site, the current site including the Sculpture Park as the site of the Vinebrook Treatment Plant, and also, we'll be doing an RFI to ask the public if there's any sites that exist out there that landowner would be interested in selling to the town. So multiple sites for that. There'll be a schematic design, so they'll take the information from the space and the space program and needs assessment, and they'll see what size building we need and what it's going to look like. We'll get some renderings of that. And then, most importantly, at the end, we'll have a cost estimate of know-how much a new police station, if that's the option we're going to go with, is going to cost us, so we'll know how much to ask for and program into our debt service plan. So I just wanted to take just a quick minute to explain that, and Chief Brown is here to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Mr. Dinesio. Mr. Eiler, Ways and Means report?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means support this 14-0-0. Chief Brown's backup does a good job of describing a lot of the deficiencies in the current police station with multiple leaks and mold issues and issues of getting to the booking area by walking through the work area. So a lot of issues that you might imagine come up with being in such an old building. Our subcommittee went through the police station and verified that it's all really true. It really is that bad. So the police station has had issues for quite a long time, and I think they've sort of patiently waited behind the DPW building, which, you know, was even worse. So, but the time has come for the police station to be done. This money is being funded from stabilization right now because free cash isn't certified, but the expectation is that once free cash becomes certified, that stabilization fund would then be replenished.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Capital Budget, please. Mark Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Capital Budget. We voted 6-0-0 in favor of the study. We also had the opportunity this morning to go through the police station with Capital Budget member Gary Caskey, and the chief took us through. And the best way I can describe this building, and I really feel bad for the people working in it, is if you had your kids, or your grandparents, or your parents, and you walked in and said, "Here's where you're going to live for the next six months," you would turn around and walk out. It is absolutely disgusting. And I understand, I don't know all the history about this building, but I understand it was supposed to be a temporary solution for the police department. I was ready to jump on a bulldozer and knock the building down. It's really that bad. I saw mold everywhere. And I'm sure many of you know that breathing this stuff is very, very unhealthy. And the pipes that are buried underneath the building are leaking. So it's not something where, I don't think... I'm not an engineer, I'm not a plumber, I'm not an electrician, I'm not an architect. But for someone, you know, to think about, "Well, we could repair this." Well, you'd have to dig the whole building up to get underneath it, to get rid of the pipes. So it served its purpose. I even went up in the attic, and I'll tell you, I would... It's scary up there. There's boards that are leaking. They're not safe. You walk on certain boards up there, and you almost feel like you're going to fall through the ceiling. So this building needs to be replaced. We support 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from the body. Questions? Mr. Caskey? If I fail to mention it on microphones, we're going to have... We have runners up and down the two aisles. We have a microphone up here. If someone does not wish to use a microphone that's being passed from one to the other. If you're out in the outskirts, you're going to might have to do a little walking.
Gary Caskey, Precinct 6. I just... There's really nothing more to say. I agree totally with what Mark Woods said. He and I... Chief Brown gave us a two-hour tour. And as far as I'm concerned, that building has outlived its usefulness. And it really, it shouldn't be used for anything. It should be completely torn down and have a new police station built at that existing site. It's the mold, and it's throughout the building. It's just really disgusting. And the people, they have to work under those conditions. And in the wintertime, they have to keep their coats on because ice dams form on the windows. It's totally unacceptable. So I would hope that everybody would vote in favor of this Article 4.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Ms. Angelo?
Thank you. I have a question about the two sites. I'm wondering if they're viable. The police station, that seems to be an awful small piece of property. And there isn't enough parking for employees now. So why would you even consider this? And the other thing is Vinebrook, it's so wet and soggy down there. That's why I'm questioning the viability of these two pieces of property. I go along with the police station, but I'm questioning where we would build it.
Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Angelo, neither one of the sites is ideal, as everybody's aware. One thing that we are sorely lacking in town is a lot of municipal land to consider. We do like the existing site as it's in the center of town. We do like the existing site as it's in the center of town. It offers a great convenience to the residents who are doing business in the center of town. And as far as the Vinebrook Treatment Plant site, it's actually a very good site. It's not quite as wet as you may expect. There's quite a bit of very dry, buildable land down there. And as John mentioned in Part Three, what we also intend on doing is hearing from property owners as to whether any property owners in town have land that they may be interested in selling to the town for this purpose that meet a particular size and location requirement. So we don't have a lot to consider, quite frankly. And those currently, as we sit here, are our best options. The existing site, possibly with the use of the Sculpture Park land, and possibly the Vinebrook Treatment Plant, as well as any other options that may come when we alert the property owners in town that we're interested in possibly purchasing land.
Would the Vinebrook building still exist?
As town meeting is aware, once we have the water hookup with the MWRA to satisfy the water usage needs, the plan was to discontinue the Vinebrook Treatment Plant. So that site would be available to be knocked down and used for a different municipal purpose.
Okay. In that building, there's a plaque to Margaret Licaro. I just, not a lot of town meeting members would even remember her. But it was because of Margaret's persistence that we did the original investigation of the plumes that were poisoning wells. So I would like to see that plaque moved up maybe to Town Hall so that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. And as far as having somebody sell us land, I would hope that we could somehow work with one of the properties that we own. Because I don't see anybody in town being so generous as to sell us any piece of property, you know, at a rate. I can just see the amount going up and up and up and up because it's a town building.
I agree. Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Sinessi.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct One. I fully support this project. I do have one question. Would there be, with the feasibility study, would there be any possibility of looking at a burged safety building with the original fire station? My thoughts are, once we do that and the schools, we're done. We've gotten all the new buildings in the last few years. So I think it would be worth looking out. Is there potential with this?
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mark.
You're on. Leave it. Don't.
Thank you. Is it on?
Talk.
It's on.
You're on, Monty. It's on.
It's on.
Talk into it.
Okay.
Point of order. I just asked a question. Can Mr. Sagorino answer, or Mr. D'Nizio?
I'm sorry.
I'll wait.
Hold on, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam, again, I think the biggest problem would be to find a large enough site. And with the central fire station, really needs to be in the center of town because those are sighted in different areas of town just for that reason. It's something that if we were given the opportunity with a beautiful piece of land that would accommodate both, I think it would be worth considering what you say at that time. I'm not very hopeful that that will be the outcome, but it's definitely worth considering.
Mr. Pearson, now we can go.
Okay. Monty Pearson, Precinct Three. I guess I'm concerned about how it is that the police station has deteriorated to this point. In my memory, we haven't been asked to do any renovations to the building in terms of windows or preventing mold. I'm just wondering why the building was allowed to just sort of deteriorate without any improvements made to it.
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Pearson, there has been plenty of funds allocated over the years by town meeting for windows and siding and roofs and things of that nature. I believe that the tack taken was that this building is beyond repair and really was unsuitable. And the decision was made to not put too many town funds into it, knowing that we would have to make a full replacement in the future.
Okay.
Further questions? Yes, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, Ms.
Keep talking.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Still not on.
Yes, it is.
Is it on? Okay. Thank you. Following Monty's question, going forward, I fully support this article, and I think that is well needed. It was a temporary building 30 years ago, so we've put this off long enough. But going forward and thinking about maintenance and how we do, you know, do all these new buildings and keep a running plan of preventative, so things don't fall apart. We have, I believe, a facilities committee that's kind of charged with doing that kind of thing from the town meeting perspective. And I'm sure that, you know, the town staff do this as well, too. Are there maintenance plans, thinking about these kinds of things? And if we can get that facility study going, or facilities committee going again, maybe they can assist with trying to maintain our buildings, our new fire, our new DPWs and things like that. So thank you.
We're running a little astray here, but if you can answer quickly, Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ms. Ellis, I would just say that the building's maintenance department does an outstanding job now. I do believe there was a period of time in town where there was not quite as much emphasis put on maintaining our buildings. But when we consolidated that department several years ago, we've been receiving quite a bit of positive feedback from the building users in terms of the maintenance and repairs that have been ongoing, whether it's the library, various other buildings within the town. I do believe with the police station, it was a conscious decision to not invest too much money in this facility that we knew we would need to replace.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Further questions way up the back? Mr. Sacks?
John Sacks, Precinct Seven. I'm wondering if the feasibility study will include an engineering look at the existing building to come to a conclusion whether it absolutely must be torn down, or is there any hope? If the police are moved out, could it be gutted and kept, or does it really have to be torn down? Is the, will that study tell us that?
Mr. D'Nizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, Mr. Sacks, that will be part of the study as one of the alternatives that we're looking for would be to be able to stay in that building in some capacity if we were moving to a different site.
Ms. Cadillac, way over in the corner.
Hi, Nikki Cadillac, Precinct Six. Just a quick question. What's the timeline for this study?
Mr. D'Nizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So if approved tonight, we're hoping to get on it right away. The process is that we'll put out an RFP to get interested parties to submit proposals for that. That takes a little bit, and we figure the study, we estimate, would take eight to 12 months to do a proper study.
Ms. Ellis, excuse me. Ms. Willard. Sorry, Sally.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move the question.
The question has been moved, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Clear two-thirds. The question has been moved. All those in favor of the warrant article? All those opposed? It's clearly a two-thirds, if not unanimous. So the article passes. Thank you. And Mr. Sinessi, I apologize. I didn't realize you would ask the question. I was looking at what I had to do next. I heard you stop. I figured we were just moving on.
I appreciate the apology. Thank you.
Article Five. To fund the Burlington International Firefighters Association contract has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. See if the town will vote to transfer from the negotiated settlement account a sum of for the purpose of funding the approved collective bargaining agreement between the town of Burlington and the Burlington International Firefighters Association for FY 2023. Same to be spent under the Board of Selectmen. Mr. D'Nizio, I assume. Mr. Tigges, vote of the selectmen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. D'Nizio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we're here again with another contract that will sound oddly familiar to the two we, that were approved at the May town meeting. This one being for the firefighters' union. And I just want to take a minute just to thank everybody that was involved in the negotiations. Everybody worked hard during the summer and made changes in their schedules and everything to be there so we could make it for September town meeting to have a contract. So similar to the two contracts that were approved for the police unions in the spring, this is a three-year contract that will encompass this current year, FY 23, next year, FY 24, and the third year, FY 25. Similar to the other contracts, this is for two, two-and-a-half percent increase on the wage schedule each year over the three years, with some minor adjustments in between the increases between steps, similar to the previous contract that we approved. There were a couple of stipend changes with the addition of a new stipend for someone to coordinate. And the SCBA equipment, that's the breathing apparatus that the firefighters use when they're out on calls, and it's a change to the step that the EMT stipend will be applied to. There's also in this contract, there's some changing in the training program with some additional training added and additional minimum training requirements for certain positions. So someone that is going to be considered to be a senior firefighter on a shift will have to have completed a minimum level of training. Also in this contract, there's policies added for both this town cybersecurity policy and for annual query checks of our firefighters. And this was necessary for us to continue to bill Medicaid for certain runs. We would have to have this language in our contract. This is a transfer from the existing budget, so it doesn't have any, it doesn't increase the budget at all. It comes from the FY 23 negotiated settlement line in the amount of $186,216. Again, I want to thank everybody that was involved and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio. Ways and Means, Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. D'Nizio said it all. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none, put to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Six has been withdrawn. Article Seven has been withdrawn. Article Eight has been withdrawn. Flip a page to get to Article Nine. To fund the part-time compensation plan. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. See if the town will vote to transfer from the FY 2023 negotiated settlement budget, the sum of $8,244 for the purpose of funding the part-time salary plan for under 20 hours for FY 2023. Same to be expended under the Board of Selectmen, or the Select Board, excuse me. Mr. D'Nizio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the name suggests, this is to fund the part-time compensation plan. This is not a recognized union. This is folks that aren't in a union because they don't work the minimum amount of hours required to be eligible for benefits or be in a union. So this is those that work less than 20 hours and any seasonal folks that may work more than 20 hours, but only for a temporary period of time. The plan calls for an increase of two-and-a-half percent on all of our rates, except for at the lowest rate for laborers. These are people that would be working for DPW or for the Rec Department. That increase is a little higher because it needs to keep up with minimum wage. So at our lowest, at our first beginner step of that rate, that increases more than two-and-a-half percent to what minimum wage is. Again, this is a transfer from an existing budget line. Doesn't increase the budget or have any effect on the budget, and the transfer is for $8,244.
Thank you. Mr. D'Nizio. Mr. Eiler, please. Ways and Means.
Once again, Mr. D'Nizio covered it all. Ways and Means supports this 14-0-0.
Board of Selectmen vote, Mr. Tigges.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none, put to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Article Ten, Form-Based Code Creation. Has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. See if the town will vote to transfer from stabilization the sum of $80,000 for the purpose of funding consulting services or any other costs incurred for work required with creation of form-based code proposals. Selectmen? Vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Tintacallis, you have to speak on this.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, when you're ready.
Well, let Ways and Means go first. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This somewhat enigmatically named article should really be renamed to evaluate zoning in the Mall Road, Middlesex Turnpike area to facilitate the changed environment in the last 50 years. That wasn't quite as concise. The, it'll be funded, $50,000 is coming via state grant, and $80,000 would be coming from stabilization. Once again, the assumption is, once free cash is certified, we would transfer the money back to stabilization from free cash. Ways and Means support this 14-0-0 because it makes a lot of sense that we look at this vital commercial area and think about what's the best way to deal with things going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Ms. Tintacallis, please. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, town meeting. Again, for the record, my name is Melissa Tintocallis. I work as the Economic Development Director. And this evening, I'd like to speak a little bit more on Article Ten and just discuss with you the request for $80,000 on this rezoning initiative. I understand that it does say form-based code creation, and maybe as you're reading your backup, many of you are wondering, "What is that?" You Googled that. Essentially, it is a type of zoning. It's a way to write zoning that focuses more on the physical form and the relationship to the public realm. So you have a little bit more control over that. But what I'd like to really talk about with this effort is rezoning, reimagining, and really thinking about how we've, the work we've done to date, continuing that along and investing in the long-term health of our community. Many of you know that I came here on board a couple, two and a half years ago, and we formed our economic development strategy through, during that time. And a key area of focus even before the pandemic was the Mall Road corridor. How the mall, retail itself was transforming with more online, you know, access, the omni channels. And so what we did was really form more of a partnership with mass development, and we focused in on this area. We took the area with a variety of property owners and really kind of zoned in and tried to imagine what this could be. And that's, many of you were part of that process, and we worked on that over the last year and a half. This highlighted area is the study area. It's about 500 acres. And just some highlights from this, as you can see here on the left or your right, majority of its office, the existing conditions, there's about 8 million square of its office, the existing conditions, there's about 8 million square feet of built buildings, and 61% of that is strictly office. We have a little retail, the next use, and there's only about 150 units of residential in this whole area, which is the assisted living of Atria and Sunrise. But, to take a quick step back, this has not just been work that we've done over the last year and a half. Many of you participated in the master plan or comprehensive plan back in 2016. And it was really exciting because even during that time, before we were even thinking and understanding about the pandemic, elements that were really important to us that are in the recommendations of this master plan were around compact development, more walkability, more intention around our open space, and things that now have come to light in a very relevant way, more so. And we've worked as a community. We've worked on this. We put in my position, I've been working with planning, to really think about the long-term strategy for our community and how we can achieve what we set out in the blueprint is of the master plan. Because the master plan's great for our aspirational goals, but the street-level implementation has to be within our zoning. So, that is the product of the last year and a half working with Mass Development. We have this great site readiness concept plan for the area. It really conveys the vision of what we can see in this corridor over the next 10, 15, 20 years. Because at the end of the day, it is a long-term play. This is not something that we'll see results over immediately. It's how we want to shape our future. And that's where we are today with the request to fund this rezoning initiative. So, the report I'm mentioning, the site -- what they labeled as a site readiness concept plan, or I've been calling a vision plan because it's loaded with what we want to see in there, lays out this corridor. But, I'll walk you through some highlights and then the key takeaways. But, as you can see, even with this graphic before you, what we're trying to do is look at some of the ecology, hydrology that existed before. We're also looking at, you know, development, areas of development. Those white kind of blocks are really just parking lots, but they're identified as potential for infill development, where we already have sewer utilities. So, that's kind of some of the themes we bring up with smart growth, build where we already have some existing infrastructure. And then the orange lines you start to see are more connections that we want to see, whether it's bike, pedestrian, and connections through parcels, not just isolated pockets. So, this is another illustration of how office-heavy we are in this corridor. We've done great work and had a lot of success with our life science effort, and we've seen office-to-lab conversions, but they're still relatively small compared to the dominant use out there. We've learned through this process that, you know, actually Burlington has the highest concentration of jobs in information and professional services. You can see that in the heat map here. That's, you know, exciting, but it's also very interesting as we come out of the pandemic because there's pros and cons with remote work and what the next life cycle is with so many people having a hybrid. We cannot have that kind of reliance and assumption on daytime population as we once had. So, these were just some references to some recent stories, but many of you may have read even this week that Massachusetts has the highest remote workers in the nation, around 24% of people in Massachusetts reported working from home over the last year. In pockets, even Cambridge is up at 44%. So, this just is telling because those jobs are portable, and what our relationship to place is going to be that much more important as those lines kind of blur. So, some takeaways to reiterate this. I think our study and where we're going with this is a recognition of the development patterns that we've created early on in the 50s and 60s. It's time to evolve to also address kind of market preferences of people wanting to walk to things, proximity to things. We have identified the 100 acres aggregated in those parking lots through that first image that you saw. It's approximately 100 acres total of unlocked or potential development, which is underutilized asphalt in many ways. And many of the themes that came out of what we've talked about, purposeful open space and connecting a mix of uses, comes out in this concept of called 15-minute village. Some people call it 15-minute city. And there, it's a simple idea of really, within 15-minute walk or 15-minute bike ride from your home or from your office, you can get to a few different things. That means through a little bit more density and a little bit more proximity and mix of uses, we can achieve that. And hence, the recommendation for looking forward to crafting new zoning for this area. But, why are we doing it now? Like, why now? Number one, I think, as you've heard this before from probably Kristen, good planning takes a lot of time. I mentioned it's a long-term play, and so as we see kind of the future and to kind of thrive in the future for our financial sustainability, it's important to lay that groundwork. Climate change is critically important. We have the Mass Vulnerabilities Plan that Conservation worked on, that has discussed heat island effects of asphalt. They've talked about incorporating nature-based solutions. But again, those are recommendations, and without street-level implementation on the bylaws, we cannot achieve those. Housing options, as Carrie mentioned from our housing assessment, majority of our housing is single-family. But, that middle housing piece, that midsize, we can create zoning that strategically places that in this corridor that leverages, that helps to support the commercial development over time. And lastly, improving open space. As we think about consolidating parking, maybe opening up areas for more development, the goal with this is also to be very intentional and purposeful about our open space. So, with that, they're not isolated pockets of some green patches in a parking lot. It becomes green corridors, connections, and open space with, you know, more of a plan, and that's part of what this will kind of be funding. So, with that, this just lays out what we would anticipate the next steps to be. I did want to mention our first step, which was pretty exciting based on what we'd done with Mass Development. The state has already awarded us $50,000 to move this forward from the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. And tonight, obviously, you know, based on the decision, if we have the approved funds to move forward, we're looking forward to launching the rezoning initiative over a 10- to 12-month period, and we would be coming back to Town Meeting for your consideration with crafted zoning for the area. And I think with that, I hope -- I welcome any questions. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Melissa, I'm just -- it just occurred to me to ask about something that is relevant in a number of other areas of town. I understand what this is. I wholeheartedly support this, but one of the questions I have is, we have block zoning. In other words, you know, you can go from one property to another, and it's a different type of zoning. So, to get around that, we have overlays, for example, the Town Center overlay. Do you envision that this would bring us yet another overlay? Or is this something that communities are using to completely rewrite zoning for different areas in their cities and towns? Thank you.
Ms. Tintocallis?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. This is new zoning, and it is not intended to be an overlay. It is a new zoning district that would supplant the old zoning.
Mr. Pearson?
Monty Pearson, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I can see that this is leading to initiatives like housing in current parking lots and things like that. And is there any consideration of using the thing that we have spent a lot of time on here, is the planned development district? The planned development district does provide for both housing and retail and office space in same zoning area.
Ms. Tintocallis?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The PDDs are crafted by developers and then proposed to us. So, the idea is that with crafting, this is, it's a community-driven zoning process. So, we create the zoning districts, and we place them in the geographic location that we're, you know, aiming for, whereas the PDD is a developer-driven and brought-to-us type of application.
Okay.
Further questions? Yes, sir.
Darrell Interess, Precinct 6. Fully support this. I think it's great that you're looking so far ahead for all of us and looking for grant funding to help subsidize the costs as well. So, this is a kind of a 12-month, we'd be funding a 12-month project. I saw in the backup about a zoning test. How does that fit into the 12-month? We don't have property owners yet identified for that. It seems like a long-term thing. Is that expected to happen within the 12 months? And what does that part of the project look like?
Ms. Tintocallis, please.
Mr. Moderator. So, the -- one of the tasks was to, in your backup, it called "test," testing the zoning, I believe that's what you're referencing. So, once the zoning is crafted, we apply it to what we call a test site. We've had a couple developers in town already agree to work with us, and the idea is to make sure that it functions the way we want it to, essentially. We apply it to a property and test it out, and that's also for our benefit, for staff's benefit, as well as to make sure it's a feasible project.
Follow-up?
So, what does that look like from a sort of a nuts-and-bolts perspective? Because, you know, permitting, development, if we're going to develop a site, that's going to take months, if not years. So, what does that look like from an implementation standpoint?
Go ahead.
So, a test is actually more a conceptual design on a site versus a physical development. And so, the physical development would come, you know, as the developers are ready, as budgets are ready. So, that's why we say it's a long-term plan. We just want to make sure that the code itself works and there's not any glitches, if you will. So, we're just testing the manual through a concept plan, working with the developers because they push and pull on their performas, and so that's why it's a little bit of a partnership when we call it a test.
Yes, sir. Up the back. Mr. Kelly. Sit up the back. It's hard for me to tell who you are.
Sorry. Melissa, have you considered what to do if the property owners in the area file subdivisions in order to get protection? How will we deal with that?
Melissa?
Mr. Moderator, I'd have to look into that. I don't know if we've considered that at this point.
Anything further? Seeing none, we'll put this to a vote. It's a -- requires 2/3. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Clearly, a 2/3 majority. The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Article 11. School Curriculum Contract Approval. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 30b, Paragraph 12b, to approve the school committee to enter into a six-year contract for the Marshall Simons Middle School Social Studies curriculum digital subscription. Okay. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ways and Means supported this 14-0-0. The MGL that's being referred to is that any procurement contract over three years requires Town Meeting approval. Since this is a six-year contract, that's why it's coming up here. This was already funded by a previous warrant article in June 2020, Article 727, so it entirely fits within that. So, there's no budget impact beyond what's already been voted. At about $13,500 a year for grades 6, 7, and 8 curriculums, this seemed like a good deal. Ways and Means supported this.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. For the School Department, Dr. Conti.
You just keep talking. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think Mr. Eiler said it, the school committee can only enter into a three-year agreement. We're not planning on changing this curriculum. If you were to buy it year-to-year over the six years, it would be more expensive. By Town Meeting supporting this, we would save $180,000 over that same period of time.
Questions from the body? Yes, Ms. Saltzman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltzman, Precinct 2. My question is, in year three, they'll be studying mass government, and I'm wondering about civics. Where does civics fit into the whole curriculum of the Marshall Middle School, meaning what even happens here in town? Do kids learn about how we operate, what we do, before we go to any other level or any other country?
Well, Ms. Saltzman, you're a little away from the article, but if Dr. Conti can handle that quickly.
No. It says mass government.
The state creates the expectations at every grade level for us to teach. Part of the reason that we asked you in June or May of 2020 for the curriculum in the first place is because the state standards were changed. Ms. Saltzman, to your point, is they did change the state expectations to include civics in eighth grade. This curriculum that the middle school purchased does align with the Massachusetts state standards. So, again, eighth graders will be studying civics as part of the new Massachusetts middle school standards.
Thank you.
I'm not related to Dr. Saltzman. There's no S in the middle of my name, but thank you both.
Mr. Sinessi, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. Through the moderator, I'd just like to ask Dr. Conti, why are we doing this in September versus May when we usually approve the funding for the schools? Why is this an outlier at this point?
Dr. Conti, please.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Sinessi, I think we already had the funding. I think we were just negotiating with the publisher in terms of getting the best deal that we could. So, this was the deal, and because it was more than three years, we came to Town Meeting as quickly as we could, which was September.
Yes, sir. Sad, Mr. Boyven?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. Quick question, Mr. Conti, on the content of this curriculum. Is this something that's taught in the same in all schools in the state? I know there are certain standards that must be held to, but do you have some flexibility to go to a variety of vendors and look not only for cost but for content and quality of content?
Dr. Conti, please.
Yes, that, we do. Again, we're given state expectations. And then publishers typically create content based on those state expectations. So, we had a bunch of vendors in. The middle school teachers piloted a bunch of different programs. And this is a program that they chose, again, in response to the initial warrant, which was May of 2020.
Thank you.
Mr. Round.
Hi, Jim Round, Precinct Six. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Am I correct in thinking that these are hard copy books we're purchasing?
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Round, there are, there are really two components to most curricula these days. So, this one has some hard copy books, but also has a digital component that goes with it. Could you provide me a very rough ratio of approximately, what percentage is hard copy that you purchase versus virtual? Just very rough.
Dr. Conti.
I really can't. But I think there are some prices on there for that. I think what the teachers liked about this particular program, if I remember their presentation, is they liked having some hard materials for the kids to handle. And they also liked the flexibility of the digital curriculum that accompanied it, because that gets updated in real time. Sounds like a good mix. I am pro-hard copy for, for learning. Thank you.
Mr. Hanafin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Hanafin, Precinct Two. The question that I have through you to Dr. Conti is with regards to what availability we have as parents, you know, community members to see the materials that you have. Is there, obviously, the hard copies that might come home, those books available to come home with, with students? And then beyond that, if, you know, the digital, a lot of it talks about the digital material that's there, is that available for us to, to see at any point? And how would we go about doing that?
Dr. Conti, please.
Mr. Rutter, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think the books would be coming home to students. So, you could certainly look at the books there. I think the digital content would mostly, you would have access to that through the teacher's assignments. We could probably make it available on an evening at the middle school for parents to look at or make it publicly available. I think that's a good idea. Again, the content is aligned with what the state is expecting us to do. So, maybe, I'll look into making it sort of open, have an open place for people to check it out.
Thank you very much. That would be great to be able to kind of follow along with what was, what was being taught in school. And also have a cumulative aspect of it so that we can assist our kids.
Anything further? Seeing nothing. Let's vote on this article. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Article 12. amend the general bylaw, Article 14, Section 6, Burlington Stormwater Management bylaw. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. And it is as printed in the warrant. I believe Mr. Boyven will speak on this, or Mr. Cohen. And is there a vote from general bylaw on this? I guess not. Mr. Webb?
Sorry, we have a vote from land use?
Oh, of course, sure. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Support of this Article 720. But I have a, we support this bylaw update is important for controlling our stormwater runoff over impervious surfaces in town. We have climate change in mind. More severe storms and so forth in the future might cause even more flooding problems. So, this is a big issue. It's a very timely one. We had some issues, though. We thought the article was not written very clearly, had some repetitious parts, and a general lack of clarity. Some of this is probably due to the legalese necessary in the document. And of course, we voted for it anyway, but we just wanted to point, point this out. But in particular, we question the revised requirement that the Conservation Commission will now be the sole permitting authority. Conservation is an appointed commission, not an elective board. And so, we ask Conservation and perhaps Town Council for clarification on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there an issue with Conservation being?
No, and I wasn't asked anyway, but no.
All right.
It's, it's very typical in many communities.
All right, I guess it's very typical to have Conservation in charge of certain things. And this is one of them. Mr. Cohen, please.
All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And town meeting members, good evening. I am Larry Cohen, Chair of the Burlington Conservation Commission. I'm here today to give a brief presentation on proposed changes to our bylaw. With me today to help answer your questions is our Conservation Administrator, John Keely, our Assistant Conservation Administrator, Eileen Coleman, Vice Chair of the Commission, Bill Boyven, and Commissioner Ed Leterko are all here. Okay, this, this slide shows a neighborhood of houses with yellow lines showing stormwater piping in the streets and adjacent properties. The Conservation Commission receives numerous complaints of flooding on residential properties. Upon investigation, we find that stormwater runoff from a neighbor's property may be causing flooding problems in neighbors' backyards and in basements of homes. This situation sometimes leads to neighbor-to-neighbor disputes. We also sometimes find that stormwater from residential properties is carrying pollution into our streets. As illustrated on this slide, stormwater discharged into the street, where the stormwater is carried by stormwater piping, is often discharged into low-lying wetlands. The additional water to the wetlands raises the water level. The increased water levels can cause flooding problems for homeowners considerable distance away from where the new homes are actually being constructed. On this diagram, the old house is outlined in red, the new house is outlined in green. The slide indicates that in a 30-month period, house sizes have increased. On average, the increase in house sizes is approximately 2,000 square feet over the homes being replaced. Most of you know that. With bigger homes being built, closer to setbacks, having bigger basements and requiring more land to be disturbed, Conservation has seen that the increased amounts of stormwater runoff are affecting other properties next door and other properties some distance away. Slide four is meant to illustrate a bit more detail on what's happening with respect to residential building projects. On the left side of the drawing is a pre-development schematic of a residential lot. On the right side of the drawing is a post-development schematic of a residential lot. When a large fraction of a one-half acre lot is being built upon, as you well know, trees are being taken down, leaving less tree canopy to intercept the rainfall. Less trees and less vegetation means less water is also taken up from the lot and transpired by the trees into the air. More impervious surfaces means less water is also infiltrating into the ground. The effect in total amounts to more stormwater runoff with increases of pollutants from pet waste, leaves, insecticides, fertilizers, and so forth that must be handled on a newly developed lot. The town of Burlington has had a stormwater bylaw since 2005, mostly administered by the Conservation Commission. It is a land disturbance permitting process to prevent flooding and water damage to adjacent properties. Seventeen years ago, we did not foresee the size and number of homes and commercial developments being built today. Although the bylaw was amended last year, those changes were only to conform with U.S. EPA requirements. The Conservation Commission is proposing this revision to our stormwater bylaw to lessen and mitigate the impacts of the larger-scale development with the least inconvenience to our homeowners. The Burlington Stormwater bylaw now requires a standard stormwater permit, the standard stormwater permit, which is required by state and federal law for larger projects. This requirement remains unchanged. Burlington also created, years ago, the abbreviated administrative stormwater permit for applicants proposing smaller land disturbance projects. For example, a residential lot project for knock-down and rebuild would go to the Conservation Office with an application and receive their abbreviated administrative stormwater permit. This basic requirement to go to the Conservation Office for smaller land disturbance projects for an abbreviated administrative stormwater permit remains unchanged. When permitted projects are properly designed, we rarely see problems with water affecting neighboring properties. However, the current version of the bylaw for an abbreviated stormwater permit does not require that a drainage plan be designed and stamped by a licensed engineer to assure that the drainage will in fact work. The Commission's recourse to address a complaint or problem is limited if a drainage problem with an abbreviated permitted project occurs. Without having a licensed engineer responsible for proper drainage function, there is no one whose license is on the line to review what is happening and propose a fix to the problem. The Conservation Commission has had an open public hearing for the last six months to take input from the public. We had residents, home builders, Burlington officials, and others during these hearings to give testimony. Considerable discussion during these hearings took place at our commission meetings on whether to require homeowners with a certain-sized project to appear for a public hearing. There was also considerable discussion on the value of maintaining trees because of their role in preventing flooding. We've had joint meetings with the Burlington Board of Health and planning and with relevant staff. The table on this slide shows the proposed changes in red and the result of this six-month collaboration. For the larger projects greater than 20,000 square feet of land disturbance that require a standard permit, it's on the left side of that slide, okay, and it requires a public hearing, there is very little change proposed. For the standard stormwater permit, the only change is that a new threshold of applicability for the standard permit has been added. For projects in this category, a full permit would now be triggered when additional impervious surface greater than 10% of the lot size exceeded. So, by way of example, if a 2,000-square-foot old house is knocked down, the new house being built would have to exceed over 4,000 square feet of planned area on a one-half-acre lot to trigger this threshold of added impervious surface for a standard permit. Only very, very few projects each year of the very largest of homeowner projects ever trigger this threshold for a standard stormwater permit. For the majority of homeowner-proposed projects in the 5,000 to 20,000-square-foot range of land disturbance, the threshold for an administrative abbreviated permit issued at the Conservation Office is triggered. The proposed change still does not require a public hearing, as is the case. Okay? You just, that's the way it is now. There is no public hearing. Just go to the Conservation Office with your application, as you do today, for an abbreviated permit, and you will receive your permit. This abbreviated stormwater permit also incorporates an additional triggering threshold of added impervious surface of 5% of total lot size. Okay? So, for a half-acre lot, you would have to have be adding over 1,000 square feet of additional impervious surface to trigger the threshold for an abbreviated permit. So, the only real change being proposed is that the largest of these homeowner projects greater than 10,000 square feet of land disturbance are resulting in greater than 5% total impervious surface, okay, will require that a drainage system has to be engineered and stamped by a licensed engineer. The smaller homeowner projects, less than 10,000 square feet of land disturbance, or less than 5% of added impervious surface, will still not be required to have a drainage designed by a licensed engineer. One last proposed change I'd like you to be aware of, and that's about trees. As some of you know, trees play a major role in soaking up water and helping to prevent flooding. In the public hearings, a very substantial discussion took place over the regulation of tree cutting. The, as a result, the Conservation Commission is proposing a restriction on the cutting of trees only in the rare 15-foot zoning setback. You cannot cut the tree unless you get a waiver from the Commission. So, a waiver. What's in a waiver? A waiver from the Commission usually requires a reason to propose the tree cutting in the very back of your property and some replanting of trees, which is decided upon by mutual agreement between the homeowner and the Conservation Commission. In all other areas of the lot, the Commission simply encourages applicants to minimize tree cutting. The Conservation Commission feels that these modest changes proposed will help address the core issue of increased stormwater runoff from these much larger projects. The Commission feels that the proposed changes will protect homeowners and their neighbors from flooding issues. The changes proposed are based on accomplishing this goal while still minimizing the time and cost inconvenience to our homeowners. We would be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Open it up for questions from the body. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michelle Huntun, Precinct One. My question's related to the tree removal. So, I have two trees at the very back of my property that I'm going to have to remove at some point. Can you explain to me the process I would need to go through with the Conservation Committee and what the cost is involved in that, besides me paying someone to remove the trees? And then I have a follow-up concern.
Sure. Mr. Cohen?
Most people, if they would like to remove trees, they go to the Conservation Office and have a discussion with them. And the policy on trees that are near wetlands, we have jurisdiction over. So, if there were wetlands in the back of the property, either wetlands or a stream or, or an area that floods that's on the regulated map, we would evaluate the trees. If they're sick, we give permission to take them down. If they're injured, we give permission to take them down. If we're not sure, then if it's near a regulated resource area that we have jurisdiction over, we would have an arborist take a look at the couple of trees. And they would tell us if they're sick or they're infested with insects or whatever the case is.
Who's paying the arborist?
Who what?
Who is paying for the arborist to come and examine the trees?
The homeowner would pay for the arborist. A lot of times, our staff goes out. If it's obvious, there's no need to do that.
And then my follow-up is just a concern on 6.62, 6.62.1. There's a lot of language in here about waivers and waivers being at the discretion of the Conservation Administrator. I just want to say that I am in support of this article, the spirit of it, especially with the impacts of climate change being so obvious. You know, we're in a massive drought. We're in a massive drought. There are plenty of other issues. I'm just, I have concerns with the language because it seems somewhat arbitrary and especially in a town where there are rumblings about transparency and some people being able to get things to happen a bit more smoothly if they know people. I'm concerned about the arbitrariness built into that language. Can you just elaborate on how that would be addressed and what standards, especially with this being an appointed committee and not an elected committee? Can you just address those concerns and let me know how those decisions would be made in effect?
We, each and every request for a waiver is considered on its own unique basis. We have procedures where someone submits a request for a waiver, if that's required, and asks and states the reason for the waiver. And then if it is something that is at a hearing, we will discuss it with the Commission. If it's something that does not require a hearing, then our staff simply makes a decision. We have, if it's, if it's a natural resource area, like under the Wetlands Protection Act, there is language in the bylaw that is very specific on what qualifies for a waiver. If it's, if it has to do with our stormwater bylaw, I don't believe we have regulations yet on it. And, but that's one of the things that we will be probably putting more detail in if and when we do regulations under this bylaw.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to answer one of the questions that was just asked a little more completely. The, the tree cutting in the rear setback only applies if you are coming under the stormwater permit. It's part of the stormwater permit package. If you don't need a stormwater permit, then currently we have no regulations about cutting trees in the rear of your property. That would come under a tree bylaw, which we may hope to have at some point in the future, but we don't have now. So this restriction about, you know, please don't cut in the back of the last 15 feet of your property only comes into play when there is a stormwater permit required. And then again, it can be discussed if there are particular reasons why it must happen.
Thank you, Mr. Boyden. Ms. Byer? What's coming? Just keep talking.
Hello? There we go. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. And all the examples you gave were on properties with tear downs. What happens with new construction on a lot?
New construction such as?
A new house.
A new house.
Mr. Cohen.
We have, we are not specifically regulating new houses. What we are regulating is the amount of land disturbance and the amount of added impervious surface. Right now, typically, the knockdown and rebuild of a house would qualify under our current bylaws for an abbreviated permit. And they would go to, they would go and submit the application and get the abbreviated permit.
Okay, I'm still confused, and so I don't understand if you have, okay, if you have a lot and you go to put a new house on it, you're going to disturb the land and create impervious surfaces. That doesn't come under this bylaw?
It does, but there are triggering thresholds. If you are, if you are putting up a 3,500-square-foot house, and the current house being knocked down is 2,000.
No, no, no house knocked down.
No house. It's a wooded lot.
It's a wooded lot.
If it's a wooded lot and you're putting up 3,500-square-foot house, if the total land disturbance by the, on the plan for the proposed construction is, is, is either greater than or is between 5 and 10,000, 5 and 20,000 square feet of land disturbance, if that, if that would fall under that, most likely, it would qualify for an abbreviated stormwater permit. If the land disturbance was greater than 10,000 land disturbance, then the drainage design would have to be done by a licensed engineer and stamped.
Okay, thank you. That clarifies it?
Yes.
Mr. Tate?
David Tate, Precinct 5. On the chart that you had up on the abbreviated permit, one of the changes was a butter notification. So it looks like currently there is no butter notification.
That's correct.
There will be. How many butters get notified? Is it just direct abutters? Or is it other people on the street that could be impacted by it? And are they notified of a permitting, of the permitting process so they have the ability to come and speak on or against?
Mr. Moderator, may I pass that to our staff?
Go ahead. Yes.
Eileen, do you remember the distance on the abutters?
Please come up to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead.
Eileen Coleman, Assistant Conservation Administrator. I didn't catch all of your questions, but the, we're requiring notification of abutters within 100 feet for a standard stormwater permit and for just immediate abutters for the abbreviated permit.
Thank you. Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Mr. Cohen, a question. If the decision by the Conservation Staff or the Conservation Commission, if the person submitting the application wants to appeal that, I'm just curious what the course of appeals is. Does that go to the, oh, it couldn't go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there an appeal process? Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Willard. If, if our Conservation Staff made a decision on a project that wasn't coming before us regarding trees, for example, then if that person disagreed, they can request to be put on a hearing, I mean, on a public meeting, and go to the next public meeting and discuss the issue with, with the Commission. They would have that right.
Counsel, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Commission appeal would be to Superior Court.
Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. I guess I'm a little concerned that the amount of space that is being allowed to be put in without anything other than, you know, a brief permit seems to be really huge. I mean, you're talking about 5,000-square-foot houses that are coming in and getting a abbreviated permit. I thought that there was water problems all over town. So I'm just concerned that this bylaw, stormwater management bylaw, is well intentioned, but is not actually going to address very many of the issues coming in around town. Do you believe that all of these situations where you know that there are neighbor conflicts and there are, is drain, water coming off from somebody's house into other people's houses and coming off of their houses and filling up the wetlands and then filling up the basements, that all of the things that come to you over the period of a year, that most of those will be solved by this? Because it doesn't seem like it's tight enough to do that.
Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Pearson, thank you for that question. During the six months of hearings, there was considerable discussion over how to identify the kinds of projects where there was likely to be problems. Okay, and so we are tightening up some of the land disturbance ranging now from 5,000 to 20,000 to have them covered by the abbreviated permit and the conditions that we normally put in there. But in addition, we created this other triggering threshold for an abbreviated permit of 5% of the lot area of additional impervious surface. And so what we were trying to do after hours of discussion was identify the kinds of projects that were most likely to be near the edges of the property. Okay, and by identifying the size of the property with those two triggering thresholds, we can't be sure, to be honest. I mean, sometimes you need experience before you know, but, but we think we're capturing those most problematic projects.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. Larry, you and I have spoken a number of times about some of the issues in regards to this. And as far as a personal experience with myself, we've had so many tear downs here in town. And, and I know of a number of people that have had issues with the new homes being built, degrading, which has caused some flooding issues. I'm concerned, and again, I like the spirit of this and trying to capture everything. I'm just not so sure that it really protects enough in the sense of the butters, especially from what I heard, you know, that someone would, would have to basically have out-of-pocket expense in order to fight something if they, you know, if they had to. I had some flooding issues, went through a process that I thought was, was going to rectify it. It didn't. Kind of flooded the back portion of my property and found out that the only way that I was going to be able to, to rectify it would be out-of-pocket, you know, fight it, fight it in court. To me, that's just not acceptable, especially when a builder comes in. I've got great neighbors, but when a developer or builder comes in and does it, they're not necessarily concerned about the butters, to be quite honest. Or at least that was my experience. I'm really concerned that there's, there's no mechanism right now for some of the other additional issues for the butters, like myself and the incident that I had with the flooding. And then it went through, it went through the Commission and everything, and they said, oh, yeah, it's great. And they changed the grade. I explained to them the area of concern that we've had even prior to the knockdown, and it only exacerbated and made it worse. I had to take pictures. I had to email it in order for someone to sit there and have something done to it. I'm just, I'm still not quite convinced that this really tightens up enough to protect the butters and what I've been seeing in town lately, especially with all of these tear downs. It's just, there's got to be more protections for the butters. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Cormier, thank you for that comment because what you have just done is articulated exactly what the problem is. And then someone like you, if it's happening on a property next door, will come to the Conservation Commission and want us to do something. They have, either have no permit or in some cases for the larger projects, they have an abbreviated permit. And then what happens is it was done by a landscaper. The landscaper raises the level of the yard two feet. The stuff is not draining. It's flooding that property next door, but not only that. And then it's running out either on the surface or it's running out by, it wasn't designed properly because a landscaper who's not an engineer is doing it. The whole purpose of this is we really see, almost never see issues when it's been designed by a licensed engineer who stamps the drawing. It's when, when the problem we have is when people come to us and it is not done by a licensed engineer. It was done by a landscaper who then tries another fix, and that doesn't work because it's not an engineered solution to proper drainage. That's, that, we have, we have tried to isolate exactly what the problem is, and we're hoping that these changes make it so for the larger projects and most problematic projects on homeowner lots that are only half acre, the problems will not occur.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Further questions? Mr. Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Woods, Precinct 7. My understanding is next year FEMA is going to reissue flood zones in Burlington. It's going to be redrawn. Do you anticipate an increase in your, the Conservation Commission being more impacted potentially by these redrawn areas that may incur more stormwater runoff and therefore FEMA declares them a flood zone?
Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to pass that one to our administrator.
Certainly. Mr. Keely.
Mr. Moderator. So FEMA is working on some updated maps. It's not next year. It's probably going to be the end of 2024 before they come out. So stormwater really doesn't have that big a role in their, their creation of the maps. It's really increased rainfall from climate change and better topographic information that they have from LiDAR imaging. So the stormwater, the stormwater certainly has some impact on, on water levels, but basically for the hundred-year flood and that sort of thing that they're mapping, it won't really impact what we're doing here with this stormwater bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Mr. Murphy? The question has been moved. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? It's a clear two-thirds. The question has been moved. So now we will vote on the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Let's try this once more time. All those in favor? Opposed? If there's been a clear majority, the motion passes. Thank you. It's a general bylaw. Zoning, zoning bylaws, two-thirds. General bylaws or a simple majority? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Okay. Article, the article 13. It's to establish a Burlington Housing Partnership Committee by adding a new section 2.9 to the Burlington general bylaws. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as presented in the warrant. Is there any comment from the general bylaw committee? Seeing none? We will let you take it away.
I'll be very brief. This is in your backup, so I'm mostly just telling you what you may have already read, but the Housing Partnership Committee has been an ad hoc committee, advisory committee to the Select Board for about 30 years, more than 30 years, I think, actually. It's had periods of long activity, inactivity, back and forth. Most of the activity has been when there were 40B developments and needed some assistance then. In the past two years, though, the committee has reformed and been a lot more active and a lot more proactive in trying to address our town's housing issues. So we're basically just looking to do some housekeeping, formalize the committee to make it be a standing committee in the, in the bylaws. So, and the goal in formalizing the committee is to, to formalize the committee's structure to a certain extent, so to make sure that we still have representation from the Select Board and the Planning Board, but also to give us a little bit more depth and breadth of experience on the committee. We want more people with experience in housing and real estate and legal expertise. So hoping to formalize this committee and then be able to recruit some new members to it. The other thing is that right now, we have nothing but homeowners on our committee, and we would like some renters on our committee. So with your, with your pass of this... So with your passive this tonight, I'm hoping to recruit, so if you are a renter in Burlington, you would like to be involved in our committee, you know someone, we really would like to have that perspective, because I feel like it's a significant blind spot that we have right now, not hearing from that segment of town, so.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, did the selectmen take a position on this? They did not, thank you. All right, questions from the body? Mr. Pearson.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Question about reports and presentations to the selectmen, will there be minutes required of your meetings, and will there be public reports to the selectmen and, you know, that kind of transparency stuff? I don't know exactly what that is for committees that are, committees of the selectmen as opposed to town meeting committees.
Sure. Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Donahue.
So for the, when I joined the committee two years ago, that was a little bit of housekeeping that we did, in fact, so we have been taking very thorough minutes for the last two years. Our agendas and our meeting minutes are all posted on the town website. Mike Brunyan is our Select Board member, so he typically reports back to the Select Board when there's something that we're advising them on.
Is that part of something that you guys just do, or is that something that you're required to do?
It's something right now that we do as an ad hoc committee, and I think as a standing committee, we would be required to do it.
As a standing committee, you'd be required to do it. Okay, that's great, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Pearson, this committee's work falls under the open meeting law.
Good, all right, thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Sinessi.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I'm just going to say it out loud, I don't want to codify this any further. I represent homeowners, I'm sure most of the people in this body represent homeowners. I've never once had a homeowner call me and say, you know what the problem is, the biggest problem in Burlington is that my house just costs too much. I've never had a disappointed homeowner call me, and if this group went into dormancy for 20 to 30 years, it's because there's truly no demand for it. We are at our threshold according to the state's formula. I see no reason to double down on this any further. I'm a hard no.
Mr. Widdell.
Hi, Dave Widdell, Precinct 1. One more time with feeling, can you explain the difference between, sorry, the Housing Authority and the, sorry, I left out the Housing Partnership? Why you think this needs to be separate, and why you think the selectmen have no position on whether you should be a standing committee or a standing, you know, group itself? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Donahue.
I fully appreciate why people don't understand this, and it's something we're working really hard to educate people about. So the Burlington Housing Authority is responsible for Tower Hill and Birchcrest Arms, the two subsidized low-income housing for seniors and people with disabilities in town. They also administer the town's federal Section 8 program through HUD. That's what they're responsible for, they have a board of directors that advises them. The Housing Partnership Committee is responsible for other housing initiatives in town, making sure that we have housing that is affordable, making sure that we are following fair housing laws and the way that we administer lotteries for affordable housing units, making sure we monitor those units, those sorts of things. So they're really, they really are two different things. I can't speak to why the Select Board didn't, doesn't have a position on this, my understanding is they want us to continue, we do report to them, they've been listening to us, inviting us to their meetings, and I don't know where they all went, frankly, but they definitely, we work with them closely, so there might not have been a vote, but I'm fairly certain that they would like us to continue to do the work that we're doing.
Further questions? Pat, Ms. Angelo, please.
Pat Angel, Precinct 5. Will this committee then have a budget on the next May Town Meeting for expenses?
So the town has an affordable housing fund, so anytime we have wanted to spend money, so for instance, on the needs assessment, we come before a town meeting to ask for allocation of those funds to expenses. We don't spend funds, our committee is entirely volunteer.
No, all right, so you're not going to have another budget item so that we'll have another expense at the May Town Meeting?
Sorry, didn't quite catch you, at the May Town Meeting, is that what you said?
Yeah, when we do our budget, that's when our big budget is. So will you have an article on the warrant for an expense for this committee?
I could not say for sure right now, that seems very soon for the work that we need to do, having just finished this needs assessment. The most likely scenario that I can't say for sure would happen is, we would be looking to establish a municipal affordable housing trust. To do that, there may be expenses required, but again, we would be looking to the existing affordable housing fund to use from, we wouldn't be looking for new funding.
Michelle Huntun, Precinct 1.
I just want to say that I am completely in favor of this. This committee, like all of our other committees, would be made of volunteers, and to Mr. Sinessi's point, I am a homeowner here, and I am complaining about the lack of diversity and opportunity for young families and people, you know, of other backgrounds to get into Burlington. It benefits all of us to have a more diverse population, particularly our children, and I just think it's very important that we try to keep working towards addressing that, whether it's through affordable housing or otherwise, especially with the CPA on the ballot in November, which I'm hoping will pass, a percentage of that would be earmarked towards affordable housing, so it would be in our best interest to have a committee that is already set up and able to direct us as to the best projects and review projects for implementing that.
Thank you. Further questions? No, you don't.
Absolutely, go look at Robert's rules. So my rebuttal, merely, merely, and very simply, Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1, all I'm saying is that I have no problem with diversity, I have a problem with the socialist component of it, just to be clear.
Mr. Sinessi, that's enough, please sit down.
I'm going to, thank you.
Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. Is the microphone working?
It's working, keep talking.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious why, because many of the bullet points look like they have to do with planning, and I'm just curious about why this is part of the Select Board and not part of planning. I just wanted clarification for that, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes, it's both. We work closely with both the Planning Board and the Planning Department on projects and what the town wants to do. We work at the Select Board because they ultimately make the decisions about these things, we're an advisory committee, we don't make the final decisions, really, decisions are made by the Select Board.
Mr. Sacks. Good Lord. Now, let's remember, folks, the question in front of us is, there is already an ad hoc committee. The question in front of us is, should we make that ad hoc a committee, a standing committee? It is already, the ad hoc committee is under the selectmen, and this would be too. So please, let's see if we can address that issue.
John Sacks, Precinct, John Sacks, Precinct 7. Yeah, I do think it should become not an ad hoc, but a standing committee. I think there's a belief that the market is what should control everything, there's a great beauty in the open market, but I think that we've all seen an uncontrolled open market can lead to circumstances that none of us really want. Her presentation showed us that there's a problem with housing for young families and for seniors who lived all their life here, they can't stay in their house, and they can't afford to move anyplace. Now, does the town have a role to play in what Mr. Sinessi refers to as socialism? To consider what we want for our future, is that socialism? In New York City, they created Central Park. If you left it to the market, that would all be developed. That was socialism. They said, no, let's make the center of the city not developable, and when New York was in trouble, there were people who said, let's develop it, but they didn't.
Mr. Sacks, you're kind of wandering, please, let's get to the core of the question.
A community can make decisions about what it wants, and I believe that this housing partnership is playing an important role in making decisions about what our community wants, and that's, if that's socialism, stuff it.
Mr. Sacks, please sit down. Ms. Glance.
Hi, Lori Glance, Precinct 1, and I also happen to operate a real estate company in town. I think this is a critical thing that we need to support and make permanent. I have many clients, like Mr. Sacks said, cannot afford to sell their homes, not afford, they have nowhere to go, like they need one level living. Many of our townhouses and duplexes, or there's not many duplexes, are up and down. Even the condos, there's only one or two buildings in town that have an elevator and have one level living. I think that it's a critical thing that we look at the town. I do believe in the open market, but these seniors or new families need places to go in town, so I highly support making this committee permanent.
Thank you. Yes, sir, please. No, yeah, please, sorry, I'm going to cough in my throat. Thank you, Mr. Kaski, the question has been moved. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? It's a clear two-thirds. We'll now vote on the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? It's a clear majority, and the motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Article 14, zoning law amendment, smoke shop, it has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Planning Board, please.
Mr. Moderator, with your permission, I'd like to hand this over to our staff.
Well, I'd like at least a vote.
Oh, of course. This first one is?
Smoke shops.
The Planning Board voted 6-0, I think we had one member missing to move this forward to town meeting, but what I want you to know is that this is something that we're looking for your input on. I'm sorry?
6-0.
Back in the spring of 2022, a smoke shop came before.
Hold on, Monty, will you please?
Just quickly.
Just hold on, please, I'll get to you.
This is not the Planning Board telling you that we think you should ban smoke shops, this is the Planning Board asking you for your input. Because we had such a passionate response to the smoke shop that came before us last spring, both positively and negatively, we thought it was prudent to turn to town meeting so that you could give us your input, so we know where you want to go with it. Thank you.
So could I clarify the vote? You voted 6-0 in favor of this warrant article. Okay, that's enough, thank you. All right, now, Ms. Von Brunt, please. Oops, wait a minute. Yeah, I'll let her speak, then I'll get to the land use.
So, hi, everyone, my name is Liz Von Brunt, I'm the Acting Planning Director in the Planning Department. I'm kind of, Mr. Moderator, if I may, kind of just wanted to give a brief update about our department before we start, not yet.
Just the warrant article, please.
Just the warrant article, all right. So I'm the acting director, and so the, we had a lot of discussion, and the Planning Board heard a lot from people who are both in favor and opposed to, you know, smoke shops being located in different areas of town, so we brought this to the board and to you. So right now, this is, smoke shops fall under the convenience store use category in the zoning bylaw, and so right now, they are allowed by right in the BG zoning district, so that's our general commercial zoning district, that's, you know, strip malls in town center, that's the mall, a lot of, you know, strip mall areas. It's allowed by right in IR, and in the town center, it's allowed by special permit, and so the Planning Board heard that earlier this year. And so, next slide. So a vote in favor of this article will prohibit smoke shop from all zoning districts except in the BT, the Continuous Traffic Business zoning district. And there are only three parcels in the Continuous Traffic zoning district, which is 114 Cambridge, it's Burlington House of Pizza, it's the Speedway Gas on Cambridge Street as well, and then it's the Midas at 66 Millisack Turnpike. We chose to put this in the BT's district because it is the district with the fewest number of parcels, so it would kind of just restrict the use to those parcels only, and even still, it would still require a special permit through the Planning Board, and so there are special, the Planning Board needs to make findings regarding that. So right now, this is what we're proposing to do, so you wouldn't, there wouldn't be smoke shops allowed in the town center and only in the BT zoning district. We would create a new, a brand-new definition to take it out of the convenience store use and create its own, so that it could be regulated this way. So, just so you know, we're not closing any existing smoke shops in town. It doesn't stop the sale of smoking supplies at other, at other, at other stores, and it doesn't prevent businesses from selling them as an accessory use, so as long as, you know, if 50% of your sales or less are smoking supplies, that's considered an accessory use. It just does limit the location that new smoke shops can operate, and so that's, you know, the Planning Board is bringing this to you because they want to know what you think, and with that, Mr. Moderator, that's all.
Thank you. Land Use Committee, Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr., is it on? Dave Webb, Chair of Land Use Committee. Land Use voted 0-9 against this. We agree with the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee that we think this is an improper use of the zoning bylaw, bylaws. In particular, Land Use considers it overly restrictive for business use by limiting the zoning to only one small business district, so we don't think that's appropriate at all. We feel that it should be open to all the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, Ms. Ellis. I know you have an amendment, what was your vote on this article?
So, Shari Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, so what is on the screen is the amendment that we put forth, and our vote on that amended article was 0 in favor, 8 opposed. The explanation for that is, if the objective is to limit the use in the town center, which was a lot of the discussion at the Planning Board, that seemed to be rectified in their design review of that, and that it's kind of, as we say, it's a little too late, the smoke shop is there, and they've done a nice job with regulating that through the town center overlay. The second reason was, you know, the consequence of passing this article is you are restricting it to the three areas, as Liz mentioned, two of which are pretty much in the same undesirable type of location because it's directly across from the high school. So we didn't feel that that was really any much better than in the town center, so that is our, and the amendment that we offered is really just to clarify the... So that is our, and the amendment that we offered is really just to clarify the sentence, to make it a little bit more clear. Thank you.
Is there a second to that amendment? Thank you. All right. Let's take care of the amendment. The amendment is, it's not saying you're in favor or against this article, it's just whether you're in favor or against the changes in the text there. Any questions on it? All those in favor of the amendment? Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes. Now it brings us to a discussion of the main motion. Questions from the body? Yes, ma'am, up at the corner. Is that Ms. Cadillac?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nikki Cadillac, Precinct Six. Forgive me if this is an ignorant question. I'm just, I can understand the desire to define a smoke shop separately. I'm wondering what the rationale is for limiting the locations where smoke shops can operate.
Who would like to take that? Ms. Von Venter?
I mean, I could take it, but I don't want to speak for the board if Barbara would like to do that.
Ms. LaRue, please, for the Planning Board. Just keep talking.
Is that working? Oh, there we go, okay. The idea behind this was, because we had such strong reactions to the smoke shop that came before us last spring, we wanted to bring it to you to find out, what does town meeting want? Does town meeting want us to, for all intents and purposes, eliminate future smoke shops coming to town? Because it's so restrictive, the chances are no other ones would come. That's the most restrictive zoning that we have. If town meeting feels that that's, that it's okay to have more smoke shops come in, we're fine with that. We're asking you what you want us to do. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I also have a follow-up. I can actually talk about the mic better. The follow-up is, is there space in this amendment, or this article, to separate out the definition of a smoke shop from the zoning and the restrictions that are involved in this particular article?
That would require you submitting to me a written amendment, signed, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Hiding in the mask.
Thank you so much. Hi, this is Chris Warren, Precinct Four. I have two questions. One is, I'm not sure if I understood when member Shari Ellis said that the smoke shop is here, if it is or is not, I was unclear on that. My second question is, why would we allow the smoke shops in the aquifer and water resource districts? It just doesn't seem like a very good mix to me. I'm sorry, all I can picture is a bunch of cigarette butts, you know, near our water, so, sorry.
Missed through you, Mr. Moderator, I can answer that.
Right ahead.
So the aquifer and water resource district are huge swaths of the town of Burlington, and so, you know, I feel that it wouldn't, it would restrict a lot of things. So, you know, I think that, you know, the mall is in aquifer and water. So it's, it's, it's just, you know, we only restrict things in the water resource districts, like fuel storage, you know, that type of thing. But, so this kind of wouldn't fall under that category, if that helps.
Mr. Boyden. All right, go ahead, excuse me, hold on, Mr. Boyden.
Okay, Mrs. Warren had, your first question was that Mrs. Ellis said the smoke shop is here. The smoke shop has been permitted. It's not in yet, but it will be coming in. This would not impact that smoke shop, it would only be new smoke shops. So it is possible that other vendors could come to us in other parts in town, possibly in the town center again, we don't know. So this would only impact future applications. Thank you.
Mr. Boyden.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Bill Boyden, Precinct One. I think you answered my first question I was going to ask about, is this the cigar shop going in the bank site? That's what we're talking about? I mean, cigars are legal, what's the issue here? I don't understand why it's so serious. Is this any more different than opening up another liquor store somewhere, which are nowhere near as restricted as where they can be? I'm sure there are certain restrictions, but not to only three sites that are already occupied by something else. So I personally don't see this as an issue, as long as it's, you know, a regular business with selling legal stuff. I don't see the problem.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson.
Marty Pearson, Jesus. Marty Pearson, Precinct Three. I think that the reasons that the Land Use Committee were told that this article was being brought before town meeting was that the smoke shop was selling glassware that could be used for marijuana products in addition to tobacco products. And it seems to me that it's really a mistake to use our zoning bylaws to allow into town or kick out of town various types of businesses that are selling legal products. And it's a kind of spot zoning that is probably illegal, and if not illegal, at least a practice that is frowned upon. And, I mean, I think that if we pass this, then there will be proposals to eliminate gun shops, and there'll be things to eliminate liquor stores, and whatever business you may not happen to like. And while I have businesses that I don't happen to like, I don't think we should use our zoning bylaws to be making those kind of decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anything further? Mr. Hanifin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dan Hanifin, Precinct Two. To the previous speaker's point, I think that is the issue. And I, for one, would like to, and I don't know if this is the right way to do it with these bylaws, and in this particular bylaw, and particularly the amendment, I'm not sure what effect it's going to have. But just so everybody understands, like, I think everybody does, but if you don't know where we're talking right now, there's a shop going in between Schoolhouse Ice Cream and True North Coffee, and it's a stone's throw from Simons Park, and probably the most vibrant youth activity center in town. I think we have an issue with young kids using marijuana products and smoking and things like that. That's something that we're trying to curtail. I hope everybody is trying to curtail that in town. So that's what the issue is for me. So I don't know if this is the right way to do it, but I hope we're all on the same page, that we're trying to limit those opportunities for kids. And when we're putting these things in, when the proponents of these places are putting these in, in between an ice cream store and, you know, a coffee shop that sells baked goods to kids all day, every day, that's a problem for me. And I'd like to try to find a way to at least let them know that we don't want that in the center of town. Because I don't want it in the center of town. And I hope none of us want that for our kids in the center of town. But, you know, there's places for those things, and I'm a pro-business person. But there's certain things that I think we want to limit, and that's one of them for me. So I can't really speak to, I don't know enough about the zoning, but I do know about the situation that we're having in town, and I don't like the drug activity that starts with marijuana and things in a lot of these situations. And this smoke shop that's going in absolutely sells products that are used, that kids use to smoke marijuana and other aspects of marijuana and THC and all the other issues that go along. Whether you agree with marijuana products or not being legal, that's not the point. It's for the kids right now, in my opinion. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? We'll vote on the main article. It's a two-thirds. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion fails. Brings us to Article 15. Yes, Ms. Saltzman. Ms. Saltman, please. No Z, I understand.
Myrna Saltman, Precinct Two. Since we're all gathered together for the first time in a long time, how many of the actual elected 126 town meeting members are in the house tonight?
Ninety-one. Okay, let's move on to Article 15. It's to amend the zoning bylaw distant from basement slab or crawl space and groundwater. It has been moved and seconded, and it is as presented in the warrant. Zoning Bylaw Review? Okay, plan, hold on, let's go to the Planning Board first. Let's do it right. You know, I'm out of practice.
I'm going from memory, so correct me if I'm wrong. I believe the Planning Board voted seven-zero in favor of this. Yes?
Thank you. Zoning Bylaw Review, Ms. Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review. We actually put forth an amendment which is totally housekeeping, just eliminating some punctuation and things that didn't make it in before print. So there is that amendment, and we voted six-one-zero in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. We'll get to your amendment in a little bit. Land Use Committee. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dave Webb, Chair, Land Use. We voted nine-zero in support of this. A couple of questions that we hope the Planning Board will address in their talk, maybe. We questioned the 750-square-foot limit for the footprint for building a new addition. That seems very arbitrary to us. I think you'll address that, thank you. And also, how does this limit compare to the stormwater bylaw that we just passed that applies a 500-square-foot increase to impervious surfaces? We appreciate some discussion about that, thank you.
Ms. Von Ventura, your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will be addressing both of those items, Mr. Webb. So, right now, so, we're, so, the Conservation Commission, they're talking about water coming down from the sky. We're talking about existing water in the ground that fluctuates. So we're talking about water coming up. And so, we're talking, so we're adding a new definition in the bylaw about groundwater, and specifically estimated seasonal high groundwater table. And that's kind of the threshold for this amendment. So the purpose of this is to control the adverse effects of building basement floors that are below the estimated seasonal high groundwater level, including basement flooding, pumping, and discharge of groundwater. What we're talking about is groundwater displacement. So when you build a new house that's larger or an addition with a basement that is within the water table, that water is displaced. People install sump pumps, and it is pumped out of the ground and becomes additional stormwater that affects neighbors. And so really, this amendment is about protecting your neighbors, and it's also about protecting your property. You shouldn't, you know, you shouldn't be building below the seasonal high water table. That's a risk for you as well as a homeowner. And so this will apply to all new building construction. So any tear down, if somebody happens to find a spare inch of land to build a house on in this town, that would fall under this bylaw. And also, the, we picked a 750, if you're a homeowner and you're doing an addition, and the square footprint of that addition is 750 square feet, you would also fall under this bylaw. We picked that number because the Conservation Department has been keeping tabs on kind of new home construction over the past few years. And the size, the average size, the middle size, was 750. We picked the middle because, you know, we wanted to be fair. We figured that would be a good spot, you know. So that's where we're at with that. So basically, if the, so the conditions and requirements. So if the bottom elevation of the basement is lower than the seasonal high groundwater level, you have to prove that your new construction isn't below the seasonal high groundwater level. So what you would do is, you'd be required to get equipment and hire a licensed soil evaluator to do an assessment of the ground. And that cost was about, we asked, and it was kind of around $1,200 to do that. And this would fall under the Building Department, so this would, that would apply to them. So if you still choose to build in the water table, you will be required to hire an engineer to provide detailed plans and potentially creating infiltration on-site to ensure that any water that is discharged does not go off of your property. And you need to have, these need to be stamped by a professional civil engineer. And I know that Larry Cohen talked about that earlier. So, again, but this is only, again, new construction or 750-square footprint. So, questions? I'm all set, any questions?
Let's take care of some housekeeping amendments. Can you put that up? You see all those little taken-away asterisks and commas and things? Those are the changes from the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. So we need to either make them or not. So all those in favor of the editing? All those opposed? The editing is complete. I also have a motion from Mr. Pearson, who wishes to change the 750-square-foot trigger to a 500-foot trigger. And I would like Town Council to address that, please.
This is a zoning bylaw, and if there are substantive amendments made to the zoning bylaw, it requires another public hearing. This change would be considered substantive because it applies to more property owners than the proposed amendment, and the proposed, and therefore was not advertised to those people who thought that they were not falling underneath the bylaw. And it's my opinion that the amendment is out of order without a further advertisement.
Thank you. Now let's have discussion from the body. Mr. Pearson.
Since, I brought the amendment forward with Patricia O'Brien, who is also on the Land Use Committee, because we are concerned that the 750 number is arbitrary, not related to the problem that we're seeing, and therefore is a number that ought to be changed. And the argument goes like this.
Mr. Pearson, it's a wonderful argument, but it's been ruled out of order.
Well, Mr...
If you wish to make that argument, you will have to set it up through the Planning Board and have another hearing.
Mr. Moderator, my point is, is that if people agree with me, that they should vote against this bylaw.
Then you'll have no bylaw.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm recommending that people turn this down and bring it back, because the addition to a house adding a 20-by-15-foot bedroom and a 20-by-20-foot TV room is 700 square feet. That's underneath the $750, 50-foot remark of the, that the board... That's underneath the $750, 50-foot remark of the, that the board is proposing. But if you think about it, if your neighbor put in a 20-by-20 TV room and a 15-by-20 bedroom, don't you think that that would be enough to change the groundwater? And enough to change the amount of water that's coming down to your house? And I just think that, given the amount of water problems that we have and that we're going to have in the future, that we should be doing a 500-foot minimum. That would allow people to put in a TV room or a bedroom, but it wouldn't allow them to do both of those things. Imagine the size of those things. And I recommend that the planning board go back and look at the numbers. Remember that this 750-foot number is only chosen because it was the average improvement that was asked for. There's no geological, hydrological justification for that 750 feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Response from the planning board.
I don't disagree with Monty's concern. What I would ask this body to do is vote on what you're presenting tonight, the 750 square feet. And we would certainly be willing to entertain a different number, and it would be a very easy change to make in January when we do other zoning bylaws. If we turn this down tonight, there is no protection. If we pass this tonight, we may have protection that you may not feel is stringent enough, and we're willing to revisit that, but I still think it's better to move forward with this than to have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue. Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, Precinct 1. To the acting planning director, how is the 750 calculated? Was it over five years of projects? How many additions? How many new constructions? What's the, where's the 750 come from? And to comment, my colleague, Mr. Pearson, I don't know where 500 comes from either, so 750 is a pretty good number if we have some statistics behind it. Thank you.
Sure. So the, this, these numbers were taken over a 30-month period by our Conservation Department from May 2019 to October 2021. 102 additions were permitted, so basically the average was like 40 a year. And, you know, 54 were under 700 square feet, 48 over 700 square feet, and 24 were over 900 square feet. So the average size was 724 square feet. And so that is the data that we have. And so that's what we used, and we picked the average just because we figured it would be fair to homeowners, either way.
Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. And I'm confused, again. If we vote this down tonight, so it doesn't pass, is there some rule that says it's two years before it can be reintroduced? Thank you.
Town Council, please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That would be correct unless there is a positive recommendation from the planning board for the next proposal.
Mr. Boyven.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I have a neighbor of mine who built an addition, which may or may not be 750, I'm not sure. But it had a foundation under it. There are wetlands on the property, and I, his slab may or may not be at the groundwater level. But what I saw when he showed me his house is his sump pump is the deepest sump pump I've ever seen. It's got to be two feet down. And he is constantly pumping water into the storm drain out in the street because he's got a direct connection underground. Even in dry periods, not this extreme drought, but in dry periods, nobody else is pumping, he's pumping constantly. Is there any rule or any plumbing code which says how deep a sump pump can go? Because, I mean, your slab bottom may be right at the water level, but the sump is going to be below that and just pumping groundwater, isn't it?
I don't know of any building code as to where your sump pump would be. So is the, so, is the question, what, you know, can they, I mean, it's based on the slab. So if the slab, if you were building the slab, you know, so yes, you could, if you're above the seasonal high water mark, you could still have a sump pump below that and still, and still pump water during extreme events, definitely. But this is to prevent what is happening with your neighbor, where they're constantly pumping all the time, all year round.
I just see that a improperly constructed sump pump may be pumping water even though the floor meets the rules. You know, if it's so deep that it is penetrating well below the floor.
I am not aware of any plumbing code. I would ask somebody in the building department for that. Maybe I can reach out and find out for you, but--
Yeah, I'm just curious if there is anything that limits how far you can go down in a sump pump.
I don't, I don't know.
Anything further? Mr. Round.
Jim Round, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Does this include any multifamily housing or commercial or industrial facilities?
Yes, it does. This applies in all zoning districts. Right now, any commercial property that is being rebuilt automatically goes through this type of assessment. It goes to the Conservation, it goes to Board of Health, it goes to Engineering, and they all look at stormwater and this type of thing. So, yes. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Nash.
Thank you. Mildred Nash, Precinct 3. I think we should go along with what Mrs. LaRue said. We've got all the quotation marks and so forth fixed up, and if we vote this, it's better than doing nothing. We'll get the average, but that means we'll be avoiding the really horrible additions. When I moved to Burlington, my kids used to go ice skating in a swamp. And now there are houses built on that swamp. I think we have a problem both with the water coming down and the water coming up, and that we need to do something now. It will be easy enough to mend in January to something that may be more stringent if that passes a public hearing. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? We'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? It's a clear two-thirds majority, and the article passes. Now go on to Article 16? I heard a motion to adjourn, and I heard a second. All in favor? Opposed?